I'm Karen Price, President of the League of Women Voters of Needham. This forum is part of ongoing programs to help voters make informed decisions for the upcoming election. This forum features the candidates for Barnstable County Commissioner. There are four candidates running for the two available seats, so you could vote for two. Three of the four candidates have accepted the invitation to join us this evening. I will start by explaining some procedures for the forum which each candidate received ahead of time. Candidates will have two minutes for an opening statement, two minutes to respond to questions, and two minutes for a closing statement. There are no rebuttals allowed, but you may use any time remaining in a subsequent question if you need to clarify earlier statements. I will strictly enforce time limits. I will let you finish your sentence, but not your paragraph. The order of the opening statements will be alphabetical, the closing statements in reverse, and the order of responses to questions will be rotated. Candidates may not interrupt each other, and there will be no back and forth between candidates. Personal references about an opponent are out of order. We are interested in hearing about the issues. So let's welcome the candidates. In alphabetical order, they are Mark Forrest, Democrat, Abraham Casparian, Independent, and Sheila Lyons, Democrat. The candidates have agreed that I will refer to them by their preferred first names. We'll start with opening statements, starting with Mark. Remember to unmute. Please give your two-minute opening statement.
Great, thank you, Karen. And thank you to the Cape Cod Young Professionals, the League of Women Voters, and the Cape Cod Media Center. I'm Mark Forrest, and I am running for one of the two seats on the Board of County Commissioners. I believe I can bring new ideas, new energy, and leadership to the office and to the challenges facing Cape Cod. County government has great potential, and in recent years, it's underperformed. And I think we can do more. I think we can do a better job at serving the people of Cape Cod. My background: I have a bachelor's degree from the University of Massachusetts. I have a master's degree in public administration from Suffolk University. My academic credentials are largely grounded in municipal management. I've worked for Congressman Gary Studs. I've also worked for Congressman Bill Delahunt, serving as a liaison to the communities here on Cape Cod and the islands. I'm a problem solver. I am not shy from a challenge. I'm a consensus builder, and I like to get things done. Today, I teach American Government at Cape Cod Community College. I also work for Suffolk University, coordinating a master's degree program in public administration here on Cape Cod. I am from Yarmouth. I chair the Yarmouth Board of Selectmen. I'm also a chairman of the Cape Cod Conservation District. And let me just say, it would be an honor to serve the people of Cape Cod, the people of Barnstable County as a county commissioner. And I'm glad to be here tonight, and I ask for your support.
Thank you, Mark. Abe, can we please have your opening statement? And remember to unmute.
That would be helpful. Thank you very much, Karen. And like Mark said, I want to thank each group of people that have put this program together. And thank you, Karen, for being the moderator this evening. My name's Abe Casparian. I live in Yarmouth Port. I am running for one of the two seats of Barnstable County Commissioner, and I'm looking to run as your last Barnstable County Commissioner. Because my primary goal, once I, if I'm so elected and serve on the board, is to abolish county government. Remove the county as a separate, multi-layered government that really is not needed anymore on Cape Cod. But I want to take the four years to draft the proper legislation, work with our Cape Cod legislators to put that through, while the county commissioners and I work together as a team and a body to solve problems on Cape Cod. One of the issues I'd like to see resolved is to have the county commissioners leave the Superior Courthouse and go out into the community and have their meetings held in the evenings, so we can engage the citizens and the voters that put us in office. Last year was a very tumultuous year for the county commissioners. There were comments that were made, and schoolchildren had to take a day off of school to attend the county commissioner inside the Superior Courthouse to address their county commissioners in the afternoon. Those are some of the things I'd like to see changed. I'll talk more about it. You'll hear more about my commercials on the radio, things I'd like to do. And I wanted to thank everybody for allowing me to speak tonight and be a part of the forum. And I ask you for your vote on November 3rd this year for county commission.
Thank you, Abe. And now we go to Sheila for your opening statement.
Good evening, and again, thank you to CCYP, the League of Women Voters, and thank you, Karen, for hosting. I am Sheila Lyons, and I am running for county commissioner. I am running because I have served in this seat for eight years, from 2008 to 2016. And the county is a misunderstood entity. Even those who serve it, it was a learning experience because it was newly established in 1989 by the people of Cape Cod, and it was voted on. And it is a regional overlay that is very necessary, and it's crafted to meet the needs of this region. I have the experience. We accomplished great things during the time I was there. We did great work with the Regional Network on Homelessness. We made progress on wastewater. We created the Emergency Response Center and beefed that up. All of these things have served us well in the pandemic that we are in. And I understand the government. I care about county government, and I believe in it. So that is why I am running again today. I am a social worker. I have an MSW. I have a BA in Business Administration. And I have a core curriculum from executive leadership and management in nonprofit areas from Boston University. I also am now on the Board of WOMR. I'm the president of the Community Forum here in Wellfleet, where I live. And I am also on a Board of FORWARD, which we are dedicated and just completed our first Affordable Housing for adults with autism. So I am pretty busy, and I'm also working at Outer Cape Health as a healthcare specialist. So I ask you for your vote on November 3rd, and experience matters, and that is why I'm here.
Thank you, Sheila. Now it's time for the question-and-answer portion of our forum. You will have two minutes to answer each question. And feel free to ask if you would like me to repeat the question. For the first question, we will start with Sheila. What do you see as the most pressing issue facing Cape Cod today? And how would you address it if elected?
Well, we have a lot of pressing issues here on Cape Cod, but what we don't know is what's frightening. There is going to be a fallout from this pandemic. We don't know what's on our horizon. Many businesses are struggling, and some have failed. Some have done very well, but with less staff. And there are people who are not able to find work. Families are now facing their mortgage or their rent payments that has been on a moratorium here. So there's a lot of unknown, and we need to be prepared for that and be able to be in a position to help those things. But the most important thing that is facing all of us really is climate change, and climate change has to be addressed. I do believe that two months of our pandemic stopped all human travel, which meant a very huge reduction globally of fossil fuels. And that made a significant difference. You could see the difference in the climate, and the environment responded. To me, that just killed the case that there is no more discussion about, does fossil fuels have an impact? It was proven. And that is our number-one challenge in how we help this region be a leader in getting off of fossil fuels and transitioning to a green economy. There are other issues. We're continuing with our wastewater issues. We're continuing with homelessness and housing. Housing is a huge issue here on the Cape. The county has a role in that. And how are we going to do job training for the future? How are we going to do economic development that doesn't have a negative impact on our environment? These are crucial issues that are before us in the next, you know, four years.
Thank you.
I can name a few. I could go on, but, you know, I only have two minutes.
Okay. The next person to go is Abe.
Thank you. The pressing issues that I see on the Cape are very stark. We have homelessness. We have drug and alcohol addiction on the rise. We have homelessness on the rise on the Cape. And we have to approach this together as a body. But we have to also look at a new way to approach county government. And I see the county as a superfluous layer of multi-government. I think we have to do away with it. Return the $15 million that we collect each year from our cities and towns and return that money back to the individual communities. If you look at all of our individual communities, specifically because I come from Yarmouth Port, Mark is a selectman here in Yarmouth. We have taken care of a lot of our housing. And I think a lot of the other communities are also in the same venue of taking care of their housing needs. The individual communities are buying their own homes, taking buildings and making areas for affordable housing. Because each one of our municipalities understands the difficulty. Having the extra layer of county government doesn't really assist in that. Returning the $15 million back to each one of those communities would be. In my review of the county budget, I don't see any monies that they put into building anything other than maintaining the five or the four county courthouses and the county complex in Barnstable. So I see the money coming back to the individual communities, where it would help Mark if he got an extra million dollars a year to put into the Yarmouth budget to be able to do things at the local level. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark?
Thank you. That's an excellent question. I would agree with pretty much everything that Sheila has outlined. The coronavirus situation here in the Cape is quite serious, and there are all these spillover effects affecting individuals, families, small businesses. I mean, in my own life, my own family's been impacted by this situation. I think the county needs to step up and be more engaged in providing services. It's important to point out that the county, given there's some talk about abolishing the county, it's important to understand that the county has played a very pivotal role in helping the Cape prepare for this particular crisis. Getting access to equipment, supplies, training, communications, getting access to funding to make it available for local healthcare providers in the municipalities. As a former town administrator in Provincetown and in Brewster, and as a selectman in Yarmouth, I've seen firsthand the critical role that the county plays in helping address this crisis. But there's certainly more that we can do, and I see that as a priority on day one. But as Sheila mentioned, we have issues involving clean water, wastewater, protecting our drinking water supplies, our coastal waters. Water defines the health of the Cape economy. And as the water situation deteriorates, it's going to have a direct impact on our economy. I would also agree, climate change is critical. But in each of these challenges, in each of these areas, we also have opportunities. We have opportunities to create businesses around new clean water and marine technologies. We can develop new opportunities in the area of aquaculture. So I believe that with each of these challenges come great opportunities for us to not only tackle and solve the problems, but to also create opportunities, jobs, and boost the economy for the benefit of everybody on Cape Cod.
Thank you, Mark. For the next question, we'll start with Abe. It's kind of a long question. The Barnstable County Commissioner is an executive body of the county government on Cape Cod and consists of three individuals who run on a party platform. Each are elected for a four-year term. The commissioners work closely with the legislative arm of the county, the Assembly of Delegates, in a structure that is rather unique in modern-day Massachusetts. And now the question. Actually, there's two. What do you consider the most important functions of the commission? Do you see a need for improvements to the structure or functions of the commission? And if so, what would they be? Abe?
Okay. Well, I think the most important part of the commission is the Cape Cod Commission itself, which is a body that oversees and reviews how our waterways work. And they take care of most of all of that. The three county commissioners basically take care of the county courthouses. That's the main function. They pay the bills. They meet twice a week. I'm sorry, they meet two hours a week for one day a week. And that's pretty much their entire input. Last year, I found that county commissioners, only two of them would show up, and one would not show up. So because you only need a quorum of two county commissioners to make a meeting pursuant to the open meeting rules and laws. So I find it superfluous when we have a Cape Cod commission. In my plan to abolish county government and writing the legislation to do away with the county government, we would only lose three county commissioners. They would be fired, and we would lose the 15 Assembly of Delegates. They would be terminated. The other folks that run the county government, the actual employees, would be saved and go over to the Commonwealth's payroll. I would like to draft legislation where Cheryl Andrews would step in, possibly if she'd be tapped on the shoulder to do so, to run the Cape Cod Commission and direct that body. She's very intelligent, very smart. She knows waterways. She spent a lifetime in Provincetown working on those issues. And I think she's a very capable woman who would be able to handle that position quite well. And that's the way I'd like to approach county government. But until that period of time, which takes four years to draft the legislation, I'd be working right alongside my sisters and brothers on the Board of Commissioners and the delegates to make things move smoothly and seamlessly into the next step.
Thank you. Next, we'll go to Mark.
Great question. First of all, let me just remind everyone that Barnstable County government is actually a creature and established by the people of Barnstable County. It's the people that voted to establish county government. It was people that voted in favor of the charter. And when the legislature was abolishing county governments around the Commonwealth, as they should have done, it was the people of Barnstable County that raised loud voices and demanded to save county government. So if you're going to abolish it, the first thing you've got to do is go to the people and ask them what they want. That needs to be put up for a vote and a discussion. And I bet you the people will continue to support it because the county has played an instrumental role in helping tackle some of the big problems facing us here on Cape Cod. In terms of priorities of the office or what the office does, the most important part of the job of a county commissioner is really to review and approve a budget and oversee the operations of the government. But it's also, in that process, you're setting priorities. You're identifying the things that are important, the kinds of services that maybe we don't need anymore, or the kinds of services that need to be improved upon. The other thing that's also critical is that the office is a bully pulpit. It can identify the key issues facing the people here on Cape Cod and to use that bully pulpit to get energy and attention placed on them. And when we've done that in the past here on Cape Cod, it's worked very, very well. We've made huge strides in dealing with wastewater here on Cape Cod. The county has played a role in that. We've done a lot in terms of protecting our drinking water supplies, and the county's played a huge role of that. Structurally, perhaps the most important thing, I think, is, and again, as a former town administrator, I think it's critically important to strengthen the structure for the county administrator's position. I think there needs to be one person running the show and not four. And I think the more that we can structure and empower the county administrator to do his job or her job, the better off we'll be.
Thank you. And Sheila?
Yes, I agree with that last statement of Mark's. And we did do that gradually. While I was there, we did start to empower the administrator more because they need to be able to function on a timely basis, not just when we showed up every week and signed papers. They had to have some authority. But the role of the county government is really to lead. You need the leadership to push those issues, as Mark said. Be the bully pulpit. We have excellent staff at the county. We have excellent people working across the Cape in different nonprofits that are working and finding out what are the issues here and coming before the county commissioners at all times, informing them of what their findings are, how they see solutions. And that is when the county commissioners really do have their work to call the towns together, to call the strategic departments within those towns that are associated with those problems, convene them, build that collaboration, and build a consensus as to a regional solution as opposed to each town trying to struggle. You know, the county is, its main function, its main finance source is deeds tax. And there was a time that we did look at how much people pay for the county government, and it averages out to be about $16 a year for each person on Cape Cod. The Cape Cod Commission, through your environmental tax, adds up to about 18. I think that's an amazing deal for the people across this region to put in. And we actually do the hard work and assist the towns in getting them the information they need to succeed in the goals that they have made for themselves and the shared goals that have been part of a consensus. So there is a great need and foresight in the structure and the creation of the county government. I believe in it. And one thing that people don't understand is that it does have power. And once you're in there, you start to realize what that power is. And what the most is, is the leadership.
Thank you, Sheila. Okay, time for the next question. For this question, we'll start with Mark. The COVID-19 pandemic has brought to light, and in some cases worsened, existing challenges with civic engagement. One of the most challenging of these, as the pandemic continues and meetings remain virtual, is public participation in virtual meetings. How would you ensure the commission's public meetings are accessible to those who wish to attend and give public comment? Mark?
Well, you can provide comment through Zoom meetings and the online meetings. If there are others having difficulty doing that, we've never had a problem with that in the town of Yarmouth. For quite some time, our Board of Selectmen's meetings were done online, and we've had very robust public discussions. So clearly, if there are ways to expand that, that would be terrific. But I'm glad, the question's an excellent question about civic engagement. One of the things that we haven't done enough of is teach our young people in schools just how our government works. I teach government at Cape Cod Community College, and I'm amazed at the lack of understanding and the lack of information about just the basics of how our government works, the lack of information and understanding of our Constitution. So if there's a crisis in democracy, a lot of it has to do with just the failure as a country, as a nation, to treat seriously the need to educate everyone about how this government works. It's sort of like our Constitution is like the driver's manual, and, you know, we all play a role in making this work. And if we don't teach people how to use it and how to use this democracy, it'll be in trouble, which is, I think, one of the reasons why we're in some trouble today. One of the reasons why our democratic institutions are struggling right now under an assault from a president who essentially has found it very convenient politically to attack most of our democratic institutions. So my hope is that there'll be a revival of the democratic spirit. There'll be a revival in protecting voting rights. There'll be a revival in helping people better understand how this democracy works. And hopefully, in this election, there'll be greater participation in the electoral process. So I think a lot can be done. I'm happy to do more at the county level and work with those that would like to have more of a voice in what's happening in the county government.
Sheila?
Yes, I think that civic engagement is extremely important, and education in civics is extremely important. And I think that, you know, as commissioners, we should think about ourselves going into high schools or to the community college and talk about our little government right here and how that functions. It's sort of a model of larger governments. And, you know, the power of the people, it's stated right there in the first three words, "we the people." And that is telling us that we have a responsibility. The reason we have a public school system that was created under, you know, that John Adams made sure that we had a public school system, was that people were educated. We're giving a government to the people to run. They need to know how to do it. And the more that that was taken away, it's not in the interest of powerful people to have an educated populace. So that has all been little by little taken away, and we've allowed that to happen. And we have flinched because now we have to have technology. We have to have this being taught. These are the more important things for jobs. Actually, the most important thing that we have is our government that we run. We pay taxes. We have a say on how that money should be spent. And the same is on the level of the county government. So how we can open that up, how we can have that engagement. I think that there has been some problems with public comment on some of the assembly meetings. And the rules of the game have to be spelled out right away in the beginning so everybody knows how to participate. Some people just don't understand the rules. So those things have to be made crystal clear at the beginning of a meeting. If you want to have public comment, and you missed that period of public comment, and now we're on to an agenda, you can, you submit them through a chat, and we can bring those back to be addressed the next meeting. So there are ways to be able to expand and educate people how they can communicate with us in a time of pandemic and then really get out there in the community. I agree with Abe. We did one time go around and do meetings. Not everybody was thrilled to see us, so we kind of put it away. But I think it's time to revive that.
Thank you.
Mark can attest to that.
And Abe, you're the last one on this question.
Yeah, thank you. Yes, and that goes right to my point about getting out into the community, Mark. And you're both right. We have to get a consensus, and we have to involve the people. You all both know that the county started in the 1600s. That's when Barnstable County started. It got its charter in the 80s, nearly 40 years ago. And that was due because we didn't have any kind of internet and connections like that. Now we do. So we don't need the county as much as we did back in the 80s. And we certainly don't need them as much as we did in the 1600s, when we were riding around with horses and drawn carriages. So that's when the county started, 1600, 1980. It got its charter from the people. And I think when I put forward a piece of legislation that I'd like to put forward, that we involve, we go out into the community for those four years and engage the public. Maybe the public, like you say, Sheila, might decide to say, "That's not a good idea. We want to keep county government." And then they'll be able to give us some ideas on how to improve it and make it better. Because that's what I'm interested in. I'm interested in the community, how to make it better, how to make it efficient, and save taxpayer dollars. You know, I was abandoned by my parents when I was young. I lived in a dumpster for nine months at age 14. And now I have a master's degree. I have my criminal justice degree from Westwood State College. I own my home here on Cape Cod. I think I've done quite well. But I've had to work very, very hard. And that's what I would do as county commissioner, taking all those experiences that I've had over the years into the county commissioner's office and expand it and try to do the most reasonable thing, working with my brothers and my sisters on the commission.
Thank you. Time for the next question, and for this one, we'll start with Abe. What is the role or oversight capacity of the Commission on the National Guard Proposed Machine Gun Range at Camp Edwards?
I'm going to ask you to restate it. I'm going to ask you to restate it because, and I see Mark getting...
Yeah, I'm not done either.
Okay.
Wait, wait.
That's not me.
Okay, hold on.
That's me. I apologize.
Yeah, we've gotten a little lax on the muting and unmuting. So candidates, please mute when you're not speaking. I haven't finished the question.
I apologize.
Because there's two.
I always get stuck with two, Karen.
So let me start over. What is the role or oversight capacity of the Commission on the National Guard Proposed Machine Gun Range at Camp Edwards? What impacts do you anticipate, if any, on the upper Cape and Cape Cod as a whole, should this project move forward? Okay, Abe?
It's been a large problem that has really come to head and been in the public eye now for a little bit. As far as my view on it, I think we have to allow for training, but it has to be on a safe level. My biggest concern is that a shy bullet go off and hurt someone. My biggest concern is that a shy bullet go off and hurt someone. Uh, that there be some sort of damage beyond just the environmental damage that is being caused. And there has to be a closer study on how that is implemented and how it is, uh, managed, uh, for the folks that live in that area. Um, I, and, and we have to be concerned about the weaponry. Where is those weapons going to be stored? How are they going to be managed? Those are my issues internally as, as an individual. Would I like, um, I live, uh, right down the street from a gun range. Uh, we hear it go off all the time, right here in Yarmouth, uh, the Bass River Gun and Rod Club. Uh, Mark probably gets complaints a lot about, uh, the discharge of the weapons because we're so close to Gray's Beach. So I don't live in that area, but I can assure you that there are going to be some large concerns with machine guns. So, uh, we have to look at the study of how that is being done. And I think the people in that community are on top of it. But it, it is a concern that we have to deal with.
Okay, thank you. Sheila? Unmute.
I, I am also very concerned about this. I just don't think it's, uh, what we need here on Cape Cod. We have been in this place before. Uh, they did do training here and I did write to, in public comment, I did write to them saying, I remember as a child sitting on the beaches of Yarmouth, because that's where my family bought a home. And you would hear this booming like thunder and that was all the way in Yarmouth. So I can imagine what it must have been like in Sandwich and in Falmouth to hear these, these exercises going on. And, uh, but we were sure that everything was going on. And as I say, it was like the afterglow of World War Two and we were all, you know, trusting our military, we were victors. And, um, and since then, things have not gone well. We have, we've not had, uh, great information from the military and it led us into wars that we shouldn't have been in. And, uh, and now we're doing exercises that, why, why are we doing this? Um, why are we investing in this when we could be investing in something else? So, uh, and the upper Cape is no longer the sleepy little community it was fifty years ago. It is a year-round populated community. Uh, it has a year-round economic, uh, uh, life there. This cannot, this is just going to be very disruptive and unsettling. And, and the environment, we paid, it took us thirty, forty years to, to clean up the mess from that. And it is just coming back and they're going to start all over again, like we can't remember the mistakes we made. So this is a bad idea all around. It should not happen. No good will come of it. People are already protesting. I wrote that in the letter. People will protest against you and it's just going to create division here. It is not good on any level. So I am totally against it. And I think as the commissioners, whether it is me or anyone else, they have to stand firm against this and really lead that charge.
And Mark?
Well, let me point out that this proposed range is within what we call the Upper Cape Water Supply Reserve. Um, it was established in two thousand and two. Um, I was one of the, the leading forces in establishing this reserve. The reserve is, uh, managed by an Environmental Management Commission consisting of the top environmental, uh, officers of the Commonwealth. Uh, and their job under the statute that we drafted is to protect uh, the wildlife habitat and the critical water supply resources that, uh, lie beneath this reserve. Literally underneath this land area is what we call the Sagamore Lens. The Sagamore Lens is the largest underground water reservoir on Cape Cod. It provides the, almost the sole drinking water supply for the towns of Barnstable, Born, Falmouth, Mashpee, Sandwich and, uh, Yarmouth. Uh, it is an incredibly important resource that, and the reason why we set this reserve up is because, um, that area, we used to spend years bombing it and doing artillery training. And then after significant studies and groundwater contamination investigations and, uh, and, and, and cleanup dollars, uh, we have now found out just how important and how significant this resource is. So this effort to establish the reserve was to make sure that we didn't repeat the mistakes of the past. And so in recent weeks, I've been calling out the Environmental Management Commission to step up, to do their job, to review this proposal. And they're the ones that have to make a verdict on it, uh, to step up and, uh, take action on this. And, uh, just recently, the two committees that work for the EMC stood up and they held the public forum. But there needs to be more public forums, there needs to be more scrutiny. And ultimately they need to step up and do their job, which is to protect the, the wildlife habitat and the water resources of this most precious area.
Thank you. Um, coming to the next question, this, uh, this question, we'll start with Sheila. What work have you already done on racial justice issues, either while in office or outside of public office? If elected, what steps would you take to address issues of systemic racism locally? Sheila?
I am a social worker, so I have done, um, I would like to think I've done a lot in my personal life, trying to bring people together. I genuinely like people and I don't understand why we're always at each other's throats. Uh, we could, life could be much easier if we just, uh, agree to, uh, work together. I mean, we might have disagreements, but some of them don't even matter. But we're fighting each other over them. Uh, I'm, you know, I'm this and you're that. We're not in team, team shirts here. This is life and we are people and we all, we all want the same thing when it comes down to it. We want to have a chance, we want to have, we want to have a break in life and we want to be able to work hard and, and get, get where we're going. So that happens for a lot of us. Uh, it's not so easy for people of color and we have to come to terms with that. I think that we, I feel like we're a dysfunctional family that can't come to terms with our sins of the past. Let's accept those. That doesn't mean that we're here, but those sins are being passed on to us and they're being incul- it is systemic. There's ways you can see that. There was a discussion when they, the, uh, the, the joint chief was, the first black joint chief was, uh, uh, announced. There were men saying, you know, the majority of the army is black and you can make your way through the army or any of the forces. But when it comes to then the next step of leadership, it, it, that's where you stop as a black man or a black woman. So that is a, an example of systemic racism. We have to acknowledge that we have it baked into the cake. We have to, and that's okay if, as long as we acknowledge it and make, make restitution and, and have, um, reconciliation and pay it off and go forward. This is killing us in so many ways. It, it, and it's definitely killing people of color and black men especially. So we've watched it, we've seen it.
Thank you.
We can't deny it. And we have to bring, bring that, I would like to think that commissioners could bring leadership to that problem.
Okay, next we'll go to Mark.
Well, in terms of racial justice, I think, uh, we're living in an environment where we all need to find ways to do more and to do better. Um, we need to critically evaluate and, and assess and reassess and find ways that we can play a role in racial healing. For me personally, um, before I began my graduate studies, um, I served in the inner city of Boston as a Vista volunteer. And I worked, what, what drove me to this assignment was the desegregation of the Boston schools and a desire on my part to, to play a role in helping deal with this issue. Uh, so I worked, um, in a very challenging environment, uh, and I learned a lot. It was very transformational in terms of my own life and being much more sensitive to the, the issues of race in our society. More recently, another area where I've, I've taken on a very active role is I, I, I work, uh, for the Mashpee Wampanoag Tribe. Our native peoples, um, I've spent a great deal of tr- time with the tribe and with tribal members. And my work there is to help guide the tribe on how to hang on to its reservation, its land. Uh, the Trump administration is trying to take away the tribe's land and reservation. And I've been, actually I was working with the tribe to help them get their reservation, to get their land. And it was a moment not too long ago, back in two thousand and fifteen, that we were celebrating. And now we have an administration fighting to take it away from them, which is just an outrage. So I've become much more sensitive to the issues facing Native Americans and indigenous people. And there are issues right here on Cape Cod that we need to take much more seriously. And I'd like to see the county take a more active role. I want to revitalize our Human Rights Commission. Um, that can play a very important role in this area. And we can do more, but I think that's the start.
Thank you. And Abe?
Unmute, always helps. Thank you much for that question because that is an important question in our time. Uh, a couple of things I see is our police force. I, I'm not so much concerned about our military. I'll let the military and the federal government deal with that. And certainly there could be a change in the form of government they were going to have by November third. But here on the Cape, I, I'd like to see our police force receive more money where our policemen not only can learn about the laws and how to take down a suspect, but I want them to be able to be educated enough in the social sciences to be able to approach a situation and be able to distinguish between what is a violation of the law, someone who's a danger to the community or breaking and entering into a home or someone who's just having a bad day and needs to have somebody compassionate enough to be able to understand those situations. So that, that is one approach I'd like to see taking place in all of our police departments here on Cape Cod. And to be honest with you, uh, Chief Frederickson is working into that area. He is, uh, he is the chief of police here in Yarmouth. Uh, a good friend of mine, who's the former deputy chief of police, uh, Stephen Azaros. He has also, uh, worked in that area to try and make modifications like that within their training of their police force. But we have to do a lot more, uh, much better in that area. But that's one of the areas I think we need to improve on.
Thank you. Uh, for the next question, we'll start with Mark. Massachusetts has one of the highest median ages in the country with Cape Cod, Barnstable County, one of the fastest aging regions in the state. If elected, how would you work to attract and keep young people in our region? Mark? Please, please unmute.
Sorry about that, sorry about that. Well, that attracting, uh, young people, that, that, and keeping working families here, uh, young professionals here is a major challenge. And it seems like it's getting more and more challenging as each year goes by. Just in the area of housing alone, housing is a piece of this, good jobs are a piece of this. Um, finding, uh, ways to create, um, you know, uh, a, a quality of life that's amenable, uh, to, to younger people. All of these are things that are very, very important, but they become each year a challenge, just in the area of housing. Um, I was the chairman of the Board of the Housing Assistance Corporation and we touched on this very issue, the major challenge of affordable housing, particularly for, uh, young professionals and, uh, working families. Uh, each year the cost of housing goes up and, uh, income just can't keep up. So we laid out in a series of recommendations, we issued this report called Affordable Housing, The Cost of Doing Nothing. And we sort of laid out not just the problems and what's driving, uh, this, this crisis, uh, but also some very thoughtful suggestions in terms of how we can address it and solve it. It's not the end all, it's not, that it doesn't provide all the answers, but it's a good place to start. So I think we need to make affordable housing a part of it. Um, I've been working with the Cape Cod Chamber. I'm part of a group that spun off from the Chamber of Commerce and Economic Development Corporation that essentially has been tackling opportunities in the blue economy area. We need to find ways to grow and nurture new jobs, not just in tourism and in hospitality, but also in other areas as well. Um, this blue economy gives us, gives us, uh, the opportunity actually to develop jobs in the clean water sector, the marine tech sector and elsewhere. So we have to really be focused on diversifying and strengthening the economy in a variety of areas.
Thank you. Abe?
Yes, thank you. It's a great question. I, I think one of the things that I'm focusing in on and I'd like to see happen is our two community colleges here on Cape Cod, Forests and the Bridgewater University. I'd like to see them offer our high school graduating students on Cape Cod. I'd like to see them offer two years, no tuition, as long as they sign a five-year contract which will allow them to stay or commit them to stay here on Cape Cod and work once they've received their, uh, educational degree and work either within the field or in some other capacity, if they don't want to stay within their chosen field and stay on the Cape, uh, stay on Cape Cod and help build our economy. I think that's one of the, uh, hallmarks of building up Cape Cod economically as we move forward. Uh, I think giving them an educational break is a very important thing. I think that, uh, the, uh, six to twelve years, uh, of free education was nice in its time. But I think now we have to expand that into hu- into college. I think you have to go to another level of the offering, uh, students something more. So they don't, aren't saddled with debt going into their older years. So that's one of the things I'd like to do. And I've actually talked with a few people at the, at the different, uh, uh, educational levels and talked about that concept. And they said, that is a very good concept. However, I'm not in a position to be able to do anything about it because I'm not an elected official. Subsequent to an election, if I'm so lucky to be elected, then I would have, uh, the bully pulpit, as they talk about here for, very eloquently, to be able to do something about that. So that, I think, is a very important thing and will also help with our housing issues here on Cape Cod.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Sheila, to you.
I, I actually like, um, uh, those ideas and, uh, I, I agree. I think that, that we should be able to offer free community college to people at least. And, uh, that should be nationwide, not just here for Cape Cod. Uh, that's, you know, I, I was a big supporter of Bernie and that was one of his things and it can be doable. It all depends on the choices we make on how we want to invest our money. Do we want to invest it in a machine gun range or do we want to think about putting children to school and giving them a good education and not draining them in their finances for the rest of their life? So I'm all on board on that. But that is not just enough. There is a place to, uh, we have to talk about the housing issue and a lot of that has to do with the towns. I think that the, um, housing, uh, hack has done a great job. The CDP are all trying to educate not only the person who's applying for the home, but people trying to build affordable housing and also the selectmen and the boards that they have a job to do and, and start working with their bo- their zoning boards and start allowing things to happen. We can rehabilitate a lot of old buildings here that, that need rehabilitation, keep them in a housing stock. We can, uh, we need a, a support, more rental housing for families. And we have to look at our transportation. I live on the outer Cape. It's a different challenge for people here. The economy goes to sleep in the summer, in the wintertime. Uh, unemployment, all of those things that used to work on that kind of Cape lifestyle no longer works anymore because people have second homes that they can rent all year long and they're not going to give cheap rents anymore. So there are so many challenges that are being compounded. And there, some of them are beyond us, but again, it's the leadership and the voice. And if we can use a bully pulpit to, to push those items, not just in our region, but on the state level and federal level, I'm all in. And, uh, it's just not easy. And the other thing is our transportation. One other thing I would like to see is the open Cape has to be, has to be, uh, finished. That was a county initiative, uh, they supported it and we went for it and it just never finished. And that's the thing that we have to take up to make access easy.
Thank you. Okay, we are now coming to our last question before closing statements. This one, we'll start with Abe. Cape Cod is seeing a tremendous need for leadership in environmental matters from planning for future sea level rise to building long overdue wastewater infrastructure to mitigating tourism-related environmental stress and pollution. If elected, how would you work to reserve and protect the natural environment of Cape Cod? Please be specific. Abe?
Unmute, unmute. You should have a sign that says unmute. Uh, that's a very good question. And I have to say that my background is not within environmental, uh, issues. But the Cape Cod Commission does. And I think that the Cape Cod Commission would be charged with the duty to be able to handle that much more efficiently since it is under the umbrella of the county commissioners. So I would want to put together a side group if I'm so elected as a county commissioner. As we go through the process, uh, which I would like to abolish it and have the Cape Cod Commission, like I said earlier, be its own autonomous organization through a piece of legislation that allows it to function. But in that interim, while we go through that, that period of time getting to that end goal, I'd like to see the Cape Cod Commission take more active role and be charged maybe with reporting to the commissioners through their own initiative, bringing forward to us and addressing to us at our meetings, hopefully in the evenings, on the road, uh, at the different town halls. So we can be accessible to the public and also have the public at those hearings be involved, deeply involved in how we structure it, because this is not just about the free structure it, because this is not just about the three county commissioners. And quite frankly, like I said, I don't have a lot of background in environmental issues. I'm a good businessperson. I have a master's degree in business and in education, so I know how to get the job done. I know how to work with others to get the job done. It's demonstrated here, we've worked very well together, the three of us, in this debate. But I think we can involve the county, the commission, the Cape Cod Commission to handle most of those affairs and bring them forward to the people in their individual communities.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next we'll go to Sheila. Remembered on mute.
I agree that there's a lot we can do and I would like to see us really push more for electric automobiles and make sure that those stations are here. And it's going to take subsidies for a lot of this and that's what we have to understand. So we, as a country, have been subsidizing the oil manufacturers since the day they started. And by the hundreds and billions and billions and we, we answer more to them than we do to our own people. So it's time that we start investing in America and increasing solar, increasing wind, increasing electric cars, how we can make zero impact of each home, how can we go in and retrofit and make people, homes more energy efficient? The Cape Cod Committee, the Cape Cod Light Compact, which also came out of the county government, is, was famous on that and is, it does an excellent job in going in and re-insulating, weatherproofing your home, making its energy efficient and giving you subsidies to help you do that. But it's so much bigger. So we really need to support the towns, they're passing referendums across the Cape, that they want to reduce their zero carbon footprint to, to nothing at a certain date. I was in my own town meeting and I said to myself, no wonder we are here. They were debating ridiculous issues. We have got to make a statement that this is what we demand, not only of the county commissioners, but of our state and federal leaders. So this, because we're going to, all is lost, all is lost if we lose our earth. If we lose our water, we can't breathe our air. We're done. So it is very, very important that we take this on and we have to be that bully pulpit, push for those things and be very proactive in this area and help the towns succeed in the goals they want to set.
Thank you. And Mark?
Karen, could you just repeat that question again?
Sure. Cape Cod is seeing a tremendous need for leadership in environmental matters from planning for future sea level rise to building long overdue wastewater infrastructure to mitigating tourism-related environmental stress and pollution. If elected, how would you work to preserve and protect the natural environment of Cape Cod? And please be specific.
Well, what you've laid out is really the mission or part of the mission of county government in the work of county commissioners. It's one of the reasons why I'm running for this office is because we have to provide much more leadership in each of these areas. I think I've shown over my years of service that I've had a lot, I've accomplished a lot in each of these areas, but there's no question that we have to do more. Part of this effort is focused on establishing priorities. Climate change, the Cape Cod Commission is working on strategy. They're going to basically help us identify our contributions in terms of greenhouse gas emissions. From there, we need to identify ways in which we can reduce our carbon footprint, ways in which we can better generate more renewable energy. Some of the ideas that Sheila talks about are right on. Those are the things that we need to embrace and to work harder on. But I think the Cape can make a real contribution in this area and do more. With respect to clean water, that's another area. I've had years of work in this area. I was, played an instrumental role in not only creating an upper Cape water supply reserve, but also in securing the funds to clean up the pollution problems at the base. And that work is not done. We still have other areas that need to be addressed and so we need to apply our energies there as well. But in the remaining seconds that we have, I just want to just make two other points. And with respect to the, creating a climate for young working families and professionals, the two other things that we really have to focus on are childcare and making sure that we do more in this area. I think the county can play an active role in helping create a strategy and opportunities to, to make a real difference there. And obviously partnerships, more partnerships in higher education, bringing higher education opportunities here to Cape Cod, along the lines of what I'm already doing with Suffolk University and our master's program in public administration.
Thank you. All right. Now it's time for closing statements. We're going in reverse order of opening statements, so Sheila, you go first. Two minutes.
Thank you. I am here once again asking for your vote to be county commissioner. And the reason I am here again today is that I do believe in county government. I think that it has been stagnant. I think the eight years I was there, I served first with Mary Pat Flynn and Bill Doherty. And, you know, we worked well together and we got a lot done in those four years. It didn't show right there, but we were doing, we were elected in the beginning of the Great Recession. So we had no money. We had to, we had to, you know, just choose low hanging fruit of what we could accomplish. But it taught me that planning and convening and really doing the hard work it takes to run government and to have success in your goals, it matters. As I said earlier, we talked about, we did a lot on the wastewater. I was the champion of the wastewater. I was called Mr. MWR by my opponents. That's not what I wanted to do. I wanted to fix a problem. But, and when we tried to give those solutions to towns, we were rejected. There isn't, it was just too much money, could not be conceived of. And we brought in the community through the 208. That was a lesson in civic engagement and teaching and bringing people along. And it took long eight years, but from towns rejecting our proposals in like 2010 and now this year, my town passed two point million, two point something million dollars. Yarmouth passed $5 million on issues they wouldn't even consider. So it takes time, it takes vision, it takes leadership, and it takes guts from your leaders to stick with things that are unpopular, but to engage the public and bring them and show them what is the consequence of doing nothing. I believe in county government. It's, we need to make it stronger and more proactive. I understand it and I am asking for your vote on November 3rd.
Thank you, Sheila. Now we'll hear closing statements from Abe.
Yes, thank you very much, Karen. And I want to thank you very much for moderating tonight. You've done a superb job. My name's Abe Casparian. I live in Yarmouth Port, have a master's degree, Bachelor's of Science in Criminal Justice, and I'm asking for your vote to be your last Barnstable County Commissioner. I want to spend four years redesign Barnstable County, redesign the commission, terminate the government and return $15 million back to the host communities that make up Barnstable County. I want to have the Cape Cod Commission survive on its own with the leadership of a person like Cheryl Andrews. I voted for her during the primary. She didn't make it, but she's a capable, intelligent, excellent woman who would be able to handle that if she's tapped on the shoulder and if she would even accept. I think that we can return that money back to the Cape, to the 15 Cape communities, 15 million, and take the Barnstable County offices and dispose of those offices and turn part of that office into a daycare center. A daycare center that would accommodate the parents of children, of the children that come into the courthouse for either criminal or civil litigation or divorce situations. Keep the children away from adult activities and let them have a place to go while their parents are engaged in adult activities, so they're not traumatized. That's what I see that we need to do in the Superior Courthouse at Barnstable County. On November 3rd, I'm asking for your vote to be your last Barnstable County Commissioner. Get the $15 million back to your individual communities. Allow you, the public, to go down to your town hall and make a decision on how that money is spent. Lastly, ask yourself at the end of the day, what has the county commissioners done specifically for you and how they have improved your life and what have they done to help you in your community? I haven't seen it. I'm a taxpayer here in Yarmouth. I haven't seen anything.
Thank you, Abe. Okay, Mark, last word.
Well, as a former town manager on Cape Cod and as a selectman, there's quite a bit, actually, the county's actually done. The $15 million in savings that's going to accrue to us in our communities just isn't going to arrive. The state will take it. The idea that that money's going to come back is a complete fiction. The reality is that county government, the way it's structured today, provides enormous service to the people of Cape Cod. The county has a dredging program that saves towns that need their harbors dredged, which means virtually every Cape Cod town. The county saves significant amounts of money, adding to the millions. The county has a purchasing program that helps bulk purchases in terms of supplies, office supplies for the towns. That too saves hundreds of thousands of dollars each year. We've already talked before about the critical role that the county plays in addressing this coronavirus, this pandemic. It's played a crucial and instrumental role and you'd have to say that it's played a role in clearly saving lives here on Cape Cod. We provide flu shots. Savings are also in the area of the AmeriCorps program. We were helping the town save millions of dollars in terms of direct natural resource conservation services. So if you abolish all of these things, who's going to be, the towns are going to have to come up with their own money to pay for it. And the so-called $15 million that's going to trickle down will just not appear. So this whole idea that somehow we're going to benefit from this is just not, just not going to work. So what I want to do is provide real answers, real leadership and new ideas to solve the problems here facing Cape Cod. I've got a track record of accomplishment. Feel free to go to my website, electmarkforrest.com. Like I said, it would be an honor to serve the people of Barnstable County in helping us tackle the challenges that await us so that we can keep Cod, Cape Cod, excuse me, keep Cape Cod the special place that it is. So I ask for your support in this election on or before November 3rd.
Thank you. That concludes our questions for the candidates. Thank you candidates for your cooperation and willingness to participate in the forum. The election is November 3rd. The deadline to register for, to vote for this election is October 24th. In addition to in-person voting on Election Day, vote by mail ballots may be requested through October 28th, but the Secretary of State of the Commonwealth suggests you request earlier by October 20th. The ballots must be postmarked no later than November 3rd and received no later than November 6th. In-person early voting starts this Saturday, October 17th, and goes through October 30th. Visit the Massachusetts Secretary of the Commonwealth's website or ask your town clerk for hours and location. The League of Women Voters Comprehensive Voter Guide can be found online at vote411.org and includes information on all of the offices and candidate responses to questions. And now back to our host Jay for the last word.
We'd like to close this forum by thanking all of our candidates today for their participation in our democratic process. As a reminder to the voters, please remember to vote on Tuesday, November 3rd. The polls are open from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. If you need assistance, an absentee ballot, the application for the absent ballot must be received by the town clerk's office by noon, October 28th. Thank you and have a great evening.